Look at your cellphone.
Yeah, and we're right now, we'll just let. Good evening, everyone. Hello, everyone. So, welcome to another virtual town hall. We're gonna wait a few minutes before you begin. I was gonna let all the attendees jump on. We're also live on Facebook as well. So bear with us a couple of minutes until all the attendees jump on, all the guests, and we'll start momentarily. Okay, let's see here. Wait a few more minutes for everyone to jump on. Just to kind of give everyone that's jumping on now a little heads up on the agenda. Today, we're going to be talking about fireworks. We're going to talk about Hawthorne reopening. We'll have a Q and A session, and at the same time, we have the Good Neighbors Organization and Ears to the Street of LA. Hopefully, I'm saying that correctly. Joining us today on this virtual town hall to kind of give a little background about themselves, their the message behind their movement, what they're looking into when it comes to a public safety policy change and regards to the Hawthorne budget. So as a little more heads up, just to be aware that I use, I'm using this platform to kind of give everyone access to allow them to speak to their mind. Again, we might not all agree on the same thing, but having open dialogue is the only way we can actually see change within, not only the state, but the city. So again, let's see, bear that in mind as we wait to start. I know fireworks is going to be a very hot topic, especially as we're going into 4th of July, as well as our end of the year budget. So please bear, we'll start in another minute. Looks like there's more people coming in. Let's see. Let me put the chat bump. Here we go. Excellent. Also, remember that you can post questions as I'm going through my Q and A part of the meeting. And I'll try to get through all of them as well. And whatever questions I don't get through, of course, I will hold that towards I'll either email or text your call myself and follow up with any unanswered questions. All right, we're going to begin the meeting now. Again, thank you all for coming out today to another one of my virtual town halls. It's just a way to interact and hear residents' concerns as well as giving other organizations a platform so they can have access to City Hall. Tell me their issues, explain what their, you know, their movements are, what they want to see different in the city. Last week, we had Senator Steve Bradford. The week before, we had a representative from the LA County Health Department talking about COVID. July 9th, we're going to have State Treasurer Fiona Maugh to discuss financial relief for residents and commercial and nonprofit organizations. And then the following, the last meeting in July, we will have the superintendents for both the Hawthorne School District and the Sentinel Valley School District to go over how these schools are reopening, what measures are taking, and what that program is going to look like in regards to distance learning as we start to reopen both the city and the schools. So first up, let me begin by introducing our, our guest for today. They are part of the Good Neighbors Association as well as Ears to the Street of LA. So they're, they're going to be on our, our town hall today to kind of give a little background on what their movement is about, what they want to see differently within the Hawthorne budget. And to really kind of listen to what the concerns are of many of the residents here. They've had two marches in Hawthorne that have been extremely peaceful. I've been able to attend both. They're wonderful. But I just wanted to give them the platform so they can have a way of addressing their concerns and as well as seeing if there's middle ground and how we can progress and change for the better. Let's see, first, we're going to begin with introducing Good Neighbors of Hawthorne, Hansel and Malik. If you guys can let's see, introduce yourselves a little bit. You guys are on mute.
Can you guys see us?
Yes.
Cool. So I'm Hansel. Raising Hawthorne, went to school out here. I'm part of Good Neighbors of Hawthorne.
I'm Malik. I've also been raised in Hawthorne. Just trying to help out. Thank you for having us.
Thank you guys for joining. And now from Ears on the Street of LA, we have Jaslyn and hope not mispronouncing it, Shamia?
Shamaya.
Shamaya, there we go. If you guys kind of give, you know, again, reintroduce yourselves and the organization you're a part of.
I am Jaslyn Durontez. I'm a part of Ear to the Street LA. We are more devoted to spreading political information for our youth, but we're definitely working with Good Neighbors in order to physically mobilize, but we also would like to politically mobilize.
Yeah, Jas said it perfectly. I'm Shamaya. I'm also part of Ear to the Streets LA. And like she said, our goal is to help educate, but also deal with the background of politics, which is like voting, the census, and we want to spread that information. So we've been linking up with Good Neighbors to help do so.
All right. Well, thank you guys for that introduction. So I want you guys to start off, we'll start with Good Neighbors, and you guys can all kind of meet yourselves. So for Hansel and Malik, if you guys can kind of give a little background on the organization, what you guys are trying to accomplish, what, what, what's the message and what is the change that you guys are looking for that we can create an open dialogue and bring everyone to the table?
For sure. So we started a few weeks ago. Yeah, we started around a few weeks ago. It was supposed to be a small protest originally, but it got big. And we're planning on using this momentum to inform the youth, to get the youth to vote, because we are mission is to defund the police and use those funds to fund schooling and to fund the community, invest the community instead of funding the cops. That's our mission. That's our goal right now.
And Ears to LA, if you can kind of, you know, what's, what's the background of your organization and a little history on that as well?
So I think we started Ear to the Streets LA when the entire Black Lives Matter Matters movement began to arise again a couple of weeks ago. And we thought that because all of this was happening during a pandemic, some of our people or individuals didn't know how to fully express their support for the Black Lives Matter movement. So we decided to create a platform where they did not necessarily need to physically go out and mobilize and protest, but they have a space where they can still, you know, find petitions, register to vote. There are different outlets to support the movement, and we wanted to be one of those outlets as well.
Wonderful. Okay, so Hansel and Malik and Ears to the Street of LA, if you guys can kind of, I know you guys held two protests within the city, two marches, extremely peaceful, which I'm thankful, I think, I'm thanking you guys for that. You're really trying to give a, leave a clear message of what the movement is truly about. What is it that you guys are looking for as a, as a change specifically?
Lots of things. So again, I'm afraid to lose myself to everybody. I'm Hansel. Everybody who's watching, I'm Hansel. My friend Malik is here, and my colleagues are here. You know, both of us here went to school in Hawthorne, live in Hawthorne. And we care about Hawthorne. And we've seen Hawthorne police harass, you know, people through the streets. A few months back, we saw the picture in the video of a young black male on prairie on his knees. And there was around eight cops around him. Two of the cops are MR-15s. Pointing at him. So, because again, police brutality and police abuse is not just, it works, it's everywhere. It's here in Hawthorne, unfortunately. It's in Gordina, it's in Inglewood. I'm here to present you guys with some demands. So when we say defund the police, we don't mean we're abolishing police. You know what I mean? We want to defund the police so we can use those resources and fund better schools. We can fund the community. For example, there's bathrooms in parts, local parts right now that have no soap during us, during a pandemic. They have no soap whatsoever. We not, you don't have to be a genius. The teachers here don't make enough. You don't have to be a genius here to understand that. The counselors, you don't have enough counselors in schools. So let me list some demands. We want you, we want to reach out to you so you can help us, because we don't we want to get rid of offensive military equipment owned by Hawthorne Police Department. We want to ban the use of rubber bullets, tear gas, pepper spraying protesters, even though we haven't been attacked by those with those weapons yet. For future, because we're not stopping until we see change. For future protests, we really do not want rubber bullets used against us at all. Also, we believe that the Hawthorne Police Department was representing Hawthorne demographics, and they must reside in Hawthorne. If you guys are going to have a better relationship with the city, we need to hire people from Hawthorne who look like the people from Hawthorne. If they want to serve the, the city, we believe that they will, they will have a better understanding, and they won't be as wild. They won't be holding MR-15s at their own people. Because again, there was no need for MR-15s being pointed at a young black male. We also want to make records of police misconduct publicly available on both the Hawthorne Police website and the Hawthorne's website, because we've done research between this week. It's been very difficult to find transparency with you guys. This is very hard for us to understand the budget. It's very hard for us to understand, or for you guys to tell us the misconducts that you guys have done. Hawthorne PD and Hawthorne hides that from us, and we as people demand transparency. Because you guys work for us, you guys serve us, and we need to know what's going on. We need to be very transparent with the people. We, you know, one of their future goals is also to establish an independent kind of review board that is representative of the community. So that, that board will be, will consist of having reports of deaths at the hands of the police, not just deaths, all the misconducts as well. So it will be like a board that will keep the police in check. That board will be created by the people, for the people. Again, it doesn't have to be the neighbors are going to be in that board. That's just an idea and a demand that will bring, bring it towards you and towards Hawthorne officials, because we have to keep, we have to keep this misconduct under control. And if they happen, we have to be transparent about them.
You bring up a lot of good, oh, go ahead. Sorry.
Again, it's all good. We created a form, us, Good Neighbors collaborate, collaborate with Ear to the Streets of LA. We have created a form. It's on our bio on your Instagram page. That forum has all of our demands. It has how we can use the money towards education. Maybe Jaslyn and Shamaya want to speak on the education needs that we currently need in the school system. We went to the school system. We know how it is. We met with the superintendent from the Hawthorne School District. And that didn't go very well. So we know how it is, because we are part of the system. We are the people. We live here. So again, if people can go to our bio, look at our form, you don't have to agree with defunding the police, but before you sign the petition, I urge you and may you to leave your demands there and to read our demands, because we have, we specify what, how we want those funds to be used. Again, we, again, I really urge you guys to read everything that we put on there. It's going to be on our Instagram bio. If Shamaya and Jaslyn want to speak about how we decided on how it would be appropriate to use those funds towards schools, they can do so right now.
If I can jump in real quick, so just to let the viewers know, there are a lot of questions coming in. So once Shamaya and Jaslyn kind of go over their side as well, I will be bringing out your questions to the guests. So just wait momentarily. Just want to let the audience know that. Jaslyn, Shamaya, go ahead.
So as Hansel said, the form in our bio is a petition form, and you're petitioning to defund the Hawthorne PD. On that form, we explain what our demands are, as well as where these funds can possibly be allocated towards, and that includes education. As Hansel mentioned, we did speak to the superintendent, and we're in the process of speaking with more district boards, because we want to know where our schools are struggling the most. Of course, we understand firsthand, because we attended some of these schools, but we want to have a better idea. And so a lot of issues came up. We've also spoken to teachers, because we know that out of everyone in educational systems, teachers and students are the ones who are constantly, you know, who need, have the most needs, yet they're not being met. And I think that some issues that we saw was our counselor ratio. You know, in some of these schools, we have one counselor for 500 students, and they only have 30 seconds to a minute to meet with these counselors. And on top of that, the workload that these counselors take includes, you know, they get training for students who may potentially be suicidal. They have to deal with students, different classroom schedules. They're working with parents, and they're serving a lot of students. And are they really qualified to work with that many students? So that is one thing that we definitely think that more our schools need is more counselors. And we can use the funds that are going towards the police now, which is about $38 million, to instead go to our schools. And there are also other programs that we can fund in our schools that are listed on our form in the link in our bio. And then I don't know if Shamaya wants to add on. We have a lot more, but I just thought that the counselor was definitely one that was a big one.
Yeah, counseling is totally super vital to student mental health, which is how you get success throughout your, your schooling career. Another issue that the superintendent also brought up was that we need more wraparound services that help the community as well as the students that attend these schools. So an example of wraparound services include immunization, immigration services. They have programs where they give eye checks to students, dental checks to students. The superintendent has mentioned that there is not enough of those programs ready, available at the schools and ready, available to the citizens of Hawthorne in general. And schools should be a place where people can utilize those resources. So that is one way we can use funding. We can also use funding to better train teachers. In the height of this pandemic, we see that all teachers are being forced to move their educational setting online, which is very difficult. And a lot of these teachers do not have the training or the technological intelligence to assist their students the way they need to during this pandemic. So since it's no, since we are unsure when we will be back in person, I think that educating teachers on a greater scale about technology, in addition to other things like implicit bias training, you know, sensitivity training for teachers is important, and we lack that. And in communities where students have complex problems and different, you know, multifaceted situations going on in their lives, we need teachers to be able to assist and help their students as much as they can. And so funding can go towards training like that. And like Jas said, we have extended list of demands and kind of like ways that you can use these, this money to help fund schools and better the people who live in Hawthorne and their, their children, really.
And also, we're still in process of obtaining more information and more demands from our community members themselves. And on the petition form, there also is a place where you can submit one of your demands. I know that the LGBTQ plus community has definitely reached out and told us, you know, we want more resource centers for ourselves. We want also more art and music programs funded, because again, it's a, it's a way that students can de-stress. And these students are, come from very complex backgrounds. And we believe that these resource centers at schools need to be offered.
Very good points. Education is a a very important thing, and especially getting more funding to our students in our schools is extremely important. The, well, a lot of people don't know is that when it comes to the city of Hawthorne, it's kind of different than the city of LA. The budget for Hawthorne and the Hawthorne School Districts are managed separately. So they don't intertwine, and it's, we can't take funds into their budget and vice versa. So that is something that, you know, working regionally and working together as all three districts, bringing everyone to the table is a very important thing, because there's three separate budgets. We do ought to sit down together and coordinate, which is sometimes difficult. As you mentioned, you sat down with some of the superintendents, you discussed some of your concerns. But when you have three different pots of money to deal with, it's a, it's a tough one. But having this open dialogue makes it easier for us to find these middle grounds for us to start fixing.
Yeah, totally. I would like to mention that when we discussed with the superintendent, she let us know that the police department does give funding to the schools to an extent, which is why we are mentioning reallocating those funds. Since the police, you know, force has enough money to give extra money to, you know, schools, but not enough money to properly train officers, et cetera, et cetera. We feel that when you are reallocating those funds, that you could utilize the money that you are receiving to go to these schools, so that you are funding instead of police officers. Like you did say, I did not know the ins and outs, but that was why we have mentioned schools as an option of how you can fund, because we have been told that the police do fund schools. So.
And even if, you know, the budgets are separate and stuff, that's one reason why we mentioned the wraparound services, because those don't need to be directly from the school's budget. That's where the money can be reallocated. And the reason why we chose schools was that for the importance of education, that's where a lot of families feel is a safe place for them. Which is why even if the budgets are separate for the schools, we can still help these students out and help these families out with the budget we want to real, reallocate.
Again, we believe, firmly believe that the more resources you put into a community, the less crime there will be, the less trouble there will be. So if we use this money to, okay, so the Hawthorne Police Department right now, they're planning on giving 38 million to the Hawthorne PD, right? As for the community, I believe the number is, I believe is three or four. To me, that's very lopsided. We aim on defunding the police. We would like half. We, I mean, the people. So it doesn't have to be half, because we understand that there needs to be training to be done, and it needs to be wages to be paid. But there's been a history of all this money, yet they haven't properly trained the, the cops or the, or the officers. That's not our problem. They haven't, they've been having the resources, and they haven't, they haven't used it properly. That is no longer a problem. Our problem is to fund schooling, to fund the community, invest into the community. The more resources that we have, the less crime there will be everywhere, which is why we are mobilizing people. That's what we stand for right here. This is why we stand for.
Yeah, and that's why I mentioned that the, bringing everyone to the table, as you guys mentioned, is the, the best way to do this, is coordinating all three budgets together to see where that middle ground is. It would be easier if they were all combined, right, like in LA. But this way, the way you guys are doing and asking for bringing everyone to the table to relook at everything, especially on education, is a, is a very, very important thing. It's a lovely task you're doing. You're not saying it's for, you know, other random things or other random items. These are truly to help not only the residents, but the students themselves. But we're going to take a few questions from the audience that you guys can kind of help answer when they have a few questions on that. We have a question from John Yaboah. Says, hi, where do we go to donate to Good Neighbors?
Nice. Hi, John. Well, first, I want to thank you for wanting to donate to us. Let me explain what we do with that money. So we donate to us, we use that money to buy supplies for the protests. We use that money to buy snacks and water, masks, and hand sanitizer for the people who go and stand with us in the streets. Cool. Most of the money then gets donated to the families of George Floyd, to the families of Barbara Fuller, and other families that have been affected by the system. So again, you can follow us on Instagram. We've already posted our Venmo account, but we will add a Venmo on the form. So be aware. We're going to add Venmo information on the form that we, you guys can donate and support this.
The Venmo name is @goodneighbors, good spelled G U D, neighbors spelled like normal, and you can Venmo us there.
Sure. So again, what was it?
Good neighbors, G U D for good, and then just neighbors, no.
Thank you.
Cool.
The, thank you, Brad, for answering that question. The next one that we have is one comment we have from Rhonda Sullins is, I believe some funds should go towards training of the police, and certainly weed out unlawful, non-law abiding police, as with any other group of people. These kind of like comments of towards your guys is a message and movement, which is great. We have another one from an anonymous attendee, beyond banning the use, can we restrict the access to pepper spray, rubber bullets, militaries, militaries slash riot gear, et cetera? We are seeing other cities ban the use and police forces use it anyway. Can we remove their access? I know for the city of Hawthorne, they are looked, our police department are looking into restructuring themselves into following these. I think the county gave out eight separate ideas of how to reform themselves to better engage with the public. I'm happy to say that they are moving forward on that, and quite different than some other, some other cities and their police departments. So wait a little bit longer, and you'll start to see those changes, especially in our policies as well. We've asked for that in our council meeting, and there was no disagreement of any of those. They do agree that some of the tactics used by other police departments, especially about where George Floyd was and other instances, were on the extreme side and the unlawful side. Went too far. They shouldn't have done it. Which is a great thing to see, that our, our own police station is starting to change, actually, after seeing all this movement and activism from you guys as well. The voice and the movement you guys are doing is really what's inspiring all of this. If not, it would have been a lot harder to see this change. There's still a lot more change. I'm not saying it's done. It's not nowhere near.
We're just getting started.
Right. But I'd say from, from their side, there, there's a lot more change that needs to be done. But this is, this is great what you guys are doing. One question, oh, go ahead.
I'm sorry. I'm so sorry. I just wanted, we got, you mentioned Rhonda Sullins. How you doing? Thank you for watching. She talked about funding should go towards the police and training, and certainly weed out unlawful, non-law abiding police, as with any group of people. Rhonda, we agree absolutely. However, the police have had, they've had these funds for decades, and they've never decided to weed out those unlawful acts. They never decided to properly train the police department. So money is clearly not the issue, because they, they had lots of resources that would allow them to train police officers in a better way, but they haven't yet. Absolutely. We demand change. It's cute that Hawthorne PD is apparently willing to listen, willing to change the training methods, but which, when I say transparency, we need you guys on the website to show the steps you guys are taking forward. Because my team and I and all the other young people who are fighting alongside us, it's hard for us to get access to the budget, get access to the information, get access to police misconducts, and get access to the things that police is trying to do to improve relationship with the people. So we need way more transparency again. And I know I spoke about this earlier, but I'll bring it up again, again, because we, as the people, demand to see what's going on behind the curtains, because you work for us, you're supposed to protect this.
And you're absolutely right. Transparency is one of the biggest things I always fought for. It's surprising that you mentioned that's hard to see the budget. That's alarming to me. So I'll make sure that's a, an easier access point. I'll also put that on my own website for transparency reasons. We don't want residents to struggle to find the budget. Hawthorne's had, had the history of, you know, misconduct with our budget, with other past electeds. So thank you for bringing that to my attention, that even for you guys as youth, it's hard to, you know, being tech savvy as well, and it's still hard for you guys to even find it. That's alarming. So I, I agree, I agree with you. That would be the first thing I, I look into, and I'll have, either it's going to be on the city website, and they'll work on that. But I was certainly put on my own website for easier access to find. We have another question right here from Lisa Agakoli. Sorry if I, if I mispronounced your last name. Do you plan to meet with local union leaders?
As in us, as in for us here, we would love to. I mean, again, like, we've had two processes, and we're not slowing down. We're not slowing down. We're just getting started. That's the next step that we thought about. We would love to contact union leaders. Heather, if you can show the people our Instagrams, they can DM us right now. Go to the forum, messages, or email is goodneighborsofhawthorne@gmail.com. Simple as that. G U D, neighborsofhawthorne@gmail.com. Reach out to us. We would like to meet with union leaders right now.
Yeah, we're actually
We need, it's not a bad, come on, come on.
Go ahead. We're actually in the process of reaching out, especially to teacher unions. So if you all have any unions that would like to reach out to us, as Hansel said, please reach out, because we definitely want to have a conversation with you or a Zoom meeting or whatnot. So yes, we do plan on meeting with local unions. We think that's very important.
Again, we beg people of Hawthorne to stand for what they want. Because it can't just be us, the fifteen people in this life. It can't just be a former colleagues and the other colleagues from here to the streets of LA. It's not just my problem, it's our problem. So we need to work together. I know you guys are encouraging the youth for taking a step, but when the youth takes a step, we expect the same, we expect the same from you guys, from the adults. So again, not only do I ask, I demand you to stand for what you want. If you agree with what we have, look at the form, read what we have. If you agree, if you have any feedback, give it to us. Stand with us, who will meet with you, who would like to meet with everybody. Again, we deserve, we deserve more coverage in these marches, because we are trying to show that everybody in Hawthorne needs to be aware that there are kids fighting for what they believe is right. And again, we have, I believe we have great valid points on our form. So please, I invite, I demand you all to read those, and if you're good with us, hear us out, we'll work with you. Thank you.
Thank you guys for answering that. So eloquently, the next question that we have is from Kevin Mayer. If the police are defunded, who will protect us? We can't police ourselves. The police will not stick around without salaries. We will have vigilante groups or militias. In the end, we would need martial law to be imposed. That would take away many rights. And I know that this is always brought up, especially when the comment of, you know, defunding the police. And that's a very good question, and maybe you guys give more background on what it actually means. It's not, it's not on the basis of dismantling, it's being taken out of context, not like you guys are like, oh, take them away. It's not that. So if you guys can kind of give a more direct message of, and maybe change, you know, what it means really, and in people's mind of, it's not abolishing police, it's more of a restructure.
Yeah, exactly. When we say defund the police, we're not saying take away all their funding so that they can just figure it out themselves. We're saying that the police department gets too much funding for what they do and they're doing too much. Police officers all around the US are responsible for taking care of, you know, violent crimes, nonviolent crimes, mental health crises. You know, they have a very, very big scope in their job. And when they have, you know, so many things that they're responsible for, they're not going to do a good job for it. So instead of putting all this money into the police department, we want to defund it and, or at least take away some funding and reallocate it to the community. So we're not saying we want to cut all the police officer salaries. We're not saying we don't want to pay them anymore. We just want to say all this extra money that they're getting can be used and put into the community instead of being put into the police department, buying all this unnecessary stuff or, you know, being used in the police department.
Again, defunding the police is the first step. Defunding the police is the first step. And we've asked for reform. We've asked for cameras to be worn. And we need to take harsher methods or harsher like measures against the Hawthorne PD, because again, we started locally first, but we need to defund them. We need to defund them and allocate those resources, all that money, we can allocate it into our community.
Kind of piggyback on that, another question from a resident Jerry Orleman. Regarding transferring funds from the Hawthorne Police Department budget to other things to use within the schools, would that require a ballot measure of some sort? Are funds budgeted, committed particularly to schools according to designations and ballot measure passed? More question on my side. When it comes to transferring funds from Hawthorne Police Budget to like other things, schools, it's, it's a weird kind of thing. It wouldn't act a ballot measure because they're separated by law. The funds that they are allocating to schools is more of a community engagement side, more of a security side of it. So they allocate internal budget to the Hawthorne School Districts for those kind of types of activities. When it comes to actually merging them together, they've been, they've always been separated, so it won't be able to be combined. It's, and it's the treasury that want to keep everything transparent and separated. Because every board has their own way of wanting to spend money. This way it won't be shifted left and right. So the funds, it's an internal thing, so it would be the city of Hawthorne Council themselves reallocating and redistributing the funds within our police department to different programs, but it wouldn't be straight to the schools themselves as, here, you take this chunk into their budget. It's separated, but they can allocate certain funds to these community events, engagements regarding schools, the community, you know, psych evaluations, things of that nature. We have another one from a another question comes in from Angela. Is there a community review board for Hawthorne PD?
I'm sorry, that's actually one of our demands. I don't think there is. That's one of our demands right there. We need to keep doing check as well.
When it comes to community review, when it has like residents and citizens themselves, no, there is not. That is one of the suggestions the county also made for the entire LA County to look into, for all the police departments, is to have some kind of citizen and community engagement to address these occurrences. And it's one of the, you know, issues and demands that the Good Neighbors organization brought up, as well as year two, the road LA. So that is something we're looking into as well. It really does help ease tension. And it's a moving and beautiful process that you'll start to see more, hopefully. Knock on wood, God willing, more police departments jumping on board with as well. Let's see, another question. Another question we have here is from Hectorline Drummond. It sounds like some of the conversation is around mental health counselors in schools. Are there currently not enough counselors in the schools? That's more of a question for you guys to tackle.
Basically, since we've done, I'm not sure if Jaslin and Shamaya want to talk about this. We have the ratio of counselors to students in the Hawthorne School District. Shamaya and Jaslin just want to speak on that.
Yeah, so I believe the ratio is about one counselor per school in elementary schools. I think two elementary schools in the Hawthorne District share a counselor. And I think there are two at the high school level, which is like HMSA. In addition to that, the schools are, have social workers in training available at the school, so they're not even
Official.
Yeah, official, so social workers, and I think there's about one or two per school. So clearly you can see, just saying one counselor to cover all of the emotional toll that all these students have is not enough. In addition to that, counselors, as anybody who's been in a school district knows, handle way more than just emotional things. They handle school readiness, they handle bullying, they handle, in high school, they handle college preparedness. So they do so many different things. And there's one per school. And they have to go to classes, they have to meet with students, they have to talk with parents. So it just clearly isn't enough. There aren't enough counselors. And like we say, emotional health is really important. There have been cases in Hawthorne where students have been expressed feeling suicidal and not having people to talk to, which is why they have recently implemented suicide prevention training for teachers and the like, because it is a problem. And so we need to be addressing it.
Counselors, it's about psychiatric help too, I'm sorry. Again, like, we have the numbers right here on the doc that we will post here soon. The Sentinel Valley School District ratio of counselors is five hundred to one. So it's one counselor, and then with an average of five hundred students every day. And they have like little assistants who are not properly trained, who are not legit, like, who aren't like legit counselors. And again, it's beyond counseling, psychiatric help for the youth in the schools who deal with a lot more than just schools. School must be a safe place, safe haven for all. And one counselor cannot do the job that twenty five psychiatrists would do. And apparently, the Sentinel Valley School District cannot afford that right now. But if we allocate those funds from the Hawthorne PD there, I believe we will be able to at least not just back up the counselors, but include way more psychiatric help in schools, as well as art programs, musical programs, and web development programs, engineering programs. Because STEM is also the future. And we must, charter schools in Hawthorne cannot be the only privileged schools that have enough education and STEM. All public schools in Hawthorne deserve to be taught on how to properly properly code a website or engineer or STEM classes. All schools in Hawthorne need the same resources as the, as the Vechta did. The Vechta is a more privileged, wasn't a more privileged area. I went there, so I saw how our education was the times better in the education some folks received in Hawthorne High or in other high schools. So that's just what I have to say about what Shamaya said right there.
Yeah, that's a very good point. Addressing mental health issues could be an easy thing for us to implement within our police budget. Because what it's doing is also preventing future, you know, unlawful cases or, you know, unlawful things from happening, because you're addressing what could become a problem in the future. Now, you know, some of these individuals just need someone to talk to. They just need a little bit of help, restructure. When they don't get it, it begins to fester and pops. I agree with that. Having more resources towards mental health is needed. It's a big concern, especially with our youth, especially within our college campuses. So having more engagement like that sounds like a wonderful idea. It shouldn't take that much as well. Because, you know, police departments do have their own kind of department when it comes into dealing with what they call fifty one fifties, individual of that nature. So having that also changed and shifted towards allocating that to some of the schools as well, into the community, should be an easy process to do. And it's a, actually, it's a very good idea to have. We'll have a few more questions before I wrap up with you guys and then jump on to the city side and answer the city questions for the residents on a whole array of fireworks and Hawthorne reopening. And then let you guys close out. The last couple of questions we'll take here is, one is from Shirley. Would defunding the HPD decrease their manpower? As an older citizen of Hawthorne, I'm concerned that this may lead to an increase in crime. To that kind of question, what do you guys think?
I feel like we were addressed that earlier. I'm sorry, what's the gentleman's name?
It was, it's a woman, Shirley.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Shirley. Great question. We've addressed that.
Yeah. Well, two parts to that question. One thing is when we want to invest in the community, we're planning, not we're planning, but the more invested the community, the less crime there is. And we're not talking about a massive, when we say defund the police, we're not talking about a massive layoff of the police. We are talking about, for example, demilitarizing the police, you know. I don't know Hawthorne PD really needs, you know, a huge tank and a bunch of MR-15s and stuff and military equipment, you know. We're talking about defunding all of the unnecessary things they need. But we're not talking about firing half the police officers, so we, you know, and we, you know, just for no reason, you know. All the money that we're taking from the police department, we're reinvesting it into the city. And the more you invest into your community, the less crime there's going to be.
Absolutely.
Right. Like earlier, yeah. Like earlier, how someone commented, in addition to our demands, how we have listed that we want a minimization of tear gas, of rubber bullets, of noise cannons, things like that. All those things are being paid for and are very expensive, but also not very necessary. So when we can use that money to put it into things that our communities need, then there will be even less of a reason for them to need them, not that they need them anyway. So in addition to that, Hawthorne Police Department has about maybe one hundred police officers and sixty support staffs. So not that they're saying they don't have crazy manpower, but about the regular SWAT team is about sixty people, you know. So they can become more quality officers, become more trained in de-escalation and, you know, you know, hand-to-hand tactics that don't require weapons, that are non-deadly ways to stop crime as well, are very vital to the kind of like to improving our police system and to improving our communities. So when we say defund the police, we really just mean, as, you know, was mentioned, taking away unnecessary things and making them reconsider how they spend that money. So if you have less money, you're going to really consider where you're putting each dollar, you know, and you're going to put it towards things that matter. So that's really what the goal is, I guess.
Also, I'm not sure if Michael Ishi is watching this, but I want him to listen to us and listen to me right now. We need to be, I'm going to say transparency one more time. I mean, I'm going to say each time I'm here. We need to see how much of that thirty eight million actually goes towards wages. Because I'm tired of people saying, you gotta pay officers. Sure, sure. But how much of that goes to the wages? We need to see, we need you guys to break down that thirty eight million, where does it go? You guys never, you guys have never told the people. We demand transparency. We need to know how you guys plan on using that money. We do not need a whole SWAT team in Hawthorne. We do not need MR-15s. Again, like you said, we need no crime, no, really no tear gas, no rubber bullets in Hawthorne. So again, by the time, hopefully, I really hope that we get the funding. By the time we defund the police and we invest in the community, I guarantee you that there will be less crime in Hawthorne in like, in extended time. So again, the more resources we bring to the community, the less crime there will be.
And last, last thing about this, this goes to also answer another question, which asked, can we send mental health counselors for nonviolent calls? Which is something that's perfect, because like they said before, police aren't trained, or at least aren't trained much in de-escalation, right? They don't know how to calm a situation down, you know. It can go from a simple call, a simple like dispute and stuff, and blow up to something way worse, where someone gets arrested and someone goes to jail, you know.
So again, whatever demands is actually to create a civilian culture of known first responders to supplement law enforcement.
Yeah, so like Hansel said, what, like the one of the demands we had is another separate force that's unarmed and it's used to help the police officers. So it's not like all their manpower is down and stuff, and these guys are the ones who are going to answer nonviolent crimes and de-escalate situations.
And actually, we believe that they must have no affiliation with the police and have a background in social work. We don't want any affiliation with the police of this group, because that leaves less space for corruption. So it's going to be a whole separate group that will be nonviolent, that will be very educated in de-escalation and mental health as well. If you call the police and a mental disabled individual, there's a big chance they're going to talk about. And enough is enough.
You guys are making very impressive points, especially for how young you guys are. I'm speaking like as if I'm older too, so I'm maybe just a few years older than you guys. But you know, before we kind of wrap up this session, because I really want to hear a few more points. Jaslin and Shamaya, can you kind of touch base on what ears to the road in LA kind of sees in this matter as well? And then right after that, we'll have you guys kind of give your wrapping comments, tell the people, you know, a little where they can donate, where they can reach you guys. And then I'll jump on to city business and then I'll just actually address one last comment that was made. Go ahead.
Yeah, Ears to the Streets LA is
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, it's very much an organization that we put together to educate and inform people about these things. So a lot of people, like how you said earlier, don't understand the concept of defunding police. Um, they'll understand that there's a prison industrial complex, that there's a school-to-prison pipeline. Um, they don't understand redlining. They don't, there's a lot of things that um we weren't thoroughly educated about in our public education system. Um, and Ears to the Streets LA kind of is taking initiative to educate the people on how, on what is really going on in the world around them. Um, so we really support Good Neighbors in their mission to mobilize the people. Um, we have been working together to form these demands, um, to kind of spread information together, um, to show people how easy it is to register to vote, how easy it is to fill out the census, because a lot of people don't know about how to do those things or the value of those things. Um, so that is what Ears to the Streets LA's goal is. Um, and we want to see an improvement in our communities, and we want to take um the initiative by educating, so that way people can stand up for rights. Kind of just how like all of us are. We were educated, we learned some things about these situations, and we're still learning. And we're open to continue to learn um from others. And so that is really what Ears to the Streets LA is about, I think. You know, Chaz?
Yeah, I think that was very well said. That is definitely our mission. And I think one of the questions, her name, I, well, their name is Nidia. And she did point out that maybe the media is voting a part of this change. And yes, one hundred percent, we believe that the youth needs to go out to vote, because oftentimes we overlook our local politics. And so Ears to the Streets LA also wants to push our youth to let them know that you are the power and you are the ones out here mobilizing physically, therefore you must vote. Not only do you have to be out here, you need to contact your council members, you need to make sure you know who your mayor is. Mayor Vargas, I demand you speak to us. You see us talking to council member Awad, so you need to speak to us as well. The other council members, you also have to speak to us. This was our first step. As we have said, this is not the first and only call that we will have. We demand that we speak to the rest of our local government, because these demands are pivotal. Our people are getting killed out there. There was a killing that happened in Gardena a week ago. You know, the, these things are still happening in our communities that we have to address. And again, it's, it, this involves Hawthorne, yes, but this also encompasses and affects the South Bay in general. So this is just the first step. Like Hansel has been saying, this is only the beginning, it's just the start. And he also speaks about discussing with all council members. I agree. I think we have to meet with all council members as well.
And in addition to meeting with all them, I want to stress that this should not be a one-time communication thing. It should not be a one-time meeting. We give you demands and then you ignore them. They should be taken into consideration, they should be built upon. Um, these bonds should be continued throughout your term, because these are the types of conversations that will always need to happen, will continuously need to happen if we want to continue to improve the communities that we dwell in, so, yeah.
Especially now, we will push our youth to come out in November, I promise you, because we are angry. And we will be out there in the polls, so your election is in our hands, I promise you. And that's what Ears to the Streets LA is about, is to not only let us know we're physically mobilizing, but best believe that comes November, we will be out there, because we will do our research on our local politics, as well as our federal politics.
Again, like, I was planning on saying just that. Um, which, see, this is why Good Neighbors and we decided to partner up with Ears to the Streets of LA. Um, reasons like that. Now, I urge you guys, I urge everybody watching to research the history of Hawthorne. Uh, the city was once a sundown town. I don't think I need to explain what a sundown town is. I feel like we should all do your, or individual research. And we can seriously result from racism, laboring your city today. In the city, there's clearly a divide. Let's not act, let's not play ourselves. Those folks who live closer to Manhattan Beach, don't even like to be called Hawthorne. They like to be called Hawthorne Land. They like to be called Del Air. There's a clear divide. That divide has been in Hawthorne for years and decades and decades and decades. It goes back to redlining, it goes back to all this nonsense that some of us know about. A lot of this tension is on the heels, clearly. When we started marching towards that side, we saw police officers step up. But when we marched in the brown and black area of Hawthorne, where the cops at? We were from the police department. Where the cops at? When we, when we marched from the police department, I want them to step out, look at my face, look at our faces, and be there, hear us, not just ignore us, not just in a helicopter from above. Because we mean business, like, you, you can, people think it's sweet, like, I'm sure Michael Ishi thinks it's sweet, he probably thinks it's cute. But no, we're making moves, we're getting petitions to get you defunded, used as funds for the community. So it's not a game, we're just getting started, but we need more people to hop, hop on the board. And again, feel free to say demands, concerns, thoughts, it's all on the phone. It was just getting bigger and bigger and bigger. It's time for everyone to step up. I don't want to hear you guys calling the youth lazy anymore. I don't want to hear that anymore. I'm looking down at every adult that's not stepping up, that's not signing a petition, that's not donating, that's not doing the part. I'm looking down at you right now, and I urge you to stand with us if you believe in what we stand for.
Um, you know, thank you for guys saying that, um, and, and mentioning all those great points. Um, and the points you brought up, yes, you're right. Uh, I am committed to make uh these changes. There is, there has to be restructuring, we have to relook at this, especially when it comes to schooling and mental health. Uh, mental health is a, a big part of what I'm uh always into. Um, I've set up programs with Michael's Learning Place. We've had different kind of mental health programs set up as well to help our youth and to engage with rehabilitation. Um, it's an extreme full hel, it's an extreme full helpful program. Um, it prevents future problems. Uh, but you're right, uh, the points you brought up today, we need more engagement from our civil, civil leaders. Um, we need more conversations like this. It shouldn't be contested, it shouldn't be hot and heavy. All we're doing is, you know, it's opening dialogue. It's, it's having these discussions, we shouldn't come at it as we're combative, we're attacking, it's we're just, we just want to talk to see where we can get to and kind of find this middle ground. Um, for the budget part on, on the police department, um, when, when I'm able to, I have easier access for you guys to see where the budget is. Um, if you do actually attain it and see it online under the finance department, um, they have uh detailed um information on where those funds go to, um, and what department and what positions and things like that nature. Um, it, it could be because you guys aren't able to find it. Um, it, it seems that it's not transparent from the police department side, but that was a big move we did back in the past, is to make it transparent. Uh, but I'll, I'll show that link more on my website, so it's easier for you guys to gain access to it, see where it's going. Um, again, when you're digging deeper, um, you'll find other things as well. Um, but just to kind of bring it to you guys' attention, you will be able to see where they're going. Um, and kind of scrutinize in more detail of uh where the funds are allocated. Um, but yeah, it is, it is hard, yeah, it's, it's, it is hard to kind of fear from you guys where to find it. Um, but under the finance director tab at City Hall, if you click on that, it's right there, um, all, every city budget year. And then there's a website called, a lot of people don't know this one. Um, oh, why is it slipping? Open, OpenGov. Um, you know, I'll, I'll post the link on my website, uh, where you can actually look up every position and every employee, whether it's uh an elected, a part-time, a committee leader, um, and it gives their detailed um salary per year, which includes their cost to the city. And that means like, you know, their health benefits, their health package for that entire year. Um, it's, it's a very unique website. Um, I'll post that as well on my website, so you guys can, you know, click on and look at it. Uh, but being more transparent, allowing you guys to see where things are going, and where we can kind of shift funds to better adjust the community, um, that's my commitment to you guys. Um, if you don't see these changes of transparency on my side, by all means, please grab me by the ear. Um, yell at me, that's, that's what I'm here for. I am your punching bag. I do work for you. Um, but yes, rest assured that I will make it easier, um, especially on my website to gain access to these information. Um, and this, this dialogue, whenever you guys want to have this continued dialogue, by all means, um, I'm here, open ear. It doesn't have to be on these Thursdays. Uh, if you guys want to have a private talk, you know, I, I have my own little private Zoom sessions about, you know, at any time. Um, but no, I wanted to give you guys the chance and the platform to really discuss what the movement is about, what it means to defund. A lot of people think it's dismantling, it's not. We do want police officers here, we want their protection, but in a way where it's community-based, rather than, as you guys mentioned, militarized. Um, so before you kind of wrap up on that, say it again?
I said, if we make these changes now, and we properly um fund the community, we won't need them in the future.
Uh, if we can actually get the human public in the long run, to kind of self-guidance themselves, that's a utopia. Uh, so I, I agree, these programs are, are great. Um, before we kind of let you guys go off and, you know, I can answer the uh city side uh questions for the residents. Um, if you guys want to just last real quick, say where they can donate, where they can find you guys, and then uh I'll have you guys uh kind of say goodbye to everyone, and then I'll jump into city work, city business.
Okay, for Good Neighbors, you guys can find us on Instagram at Good Neighbors, uh, or, yeah, Good Neighbors. Just search up Good Neighbors, you guys can find us. Uh, our Venmo is also on that page. Again, it's at Good Neighbors. Uh, Good Neighbors for both the Instagram page and the Venmo is G U D. So, then uh DM us on Instagram, we'll get back to you as soon as we can. Uh, and donate if you want, or at least sign a petition and show up for next march.
I also want to give a big shout out to South Bay Community Care. They've helped me out, they gave me lots of guidance. Truly lots of people have reached out to us, gave me, gave us lots of guidance. Um, we have a busy week. Just because we're not protesting uh tomorrow doesn't mean we get to chill out, alright? So, I, I've talked about it on, on our, on our, on your Instagram. Uh, we will go live tonight. I want the people to join. Let me give you guys a little update, so, um, the meeting was today, we had the meeting. Thank you for having us, of course. Um, we want to meet with you guys next week, week after that, week after that, week after that. In fact, I want Alex Vargas here, I want Olivia Valentin here, I want Alex Montador here, I want Mike Teller here. Oh, hire, if you can show them that clip of me calling them out and being here, I want them here, sitting down with us. I want Michael Ishi right here, sitting down with us. Cool. Sunday, um, we're not organizing this, but we are supporting this. I want to, I want to show you the vigil that we're gonna have for the sisters that have been, that have been killed by the system as well, the trans lives. And the trans women that have been killed, women as well, that's gonna be this Sunday. Um, Monday, eight-thirty AM, Hawthorne Memorial Park. Alex Vargas, your mayor, wants to have coffee with the people. Nice. Uh, catch me there, catch us there. I'm gonna have coffee, but I'm gonna bring smoke, and by that, I mean I'm gonna bring fire. I'm gonna bring pressure, I'm gonna bring demands. I have questions to that man, alright? Cool. Catch us there on Monday. For, Sunday, you know what? Sunday is the vigil. Monday, thirty AM, with the mayor. Next Friday, I expect to find real soon for approaches, it's gonna be next Friday, so stay tuned for that.
As you said, sorry, um, our Instagram is down below. Um, all funds that go to them, we're here as collaborators, so at we're all in this together, we're all a community, just FYI, so we don't have all of that information, because we think that Good Neighbors definitely is, you know? Um, but again, if you have any union leaders that you would like us to reach out, you have any emails you would like us to send out, please let us know. DM us the information, we're open to it. And we will be posting updates that Good Neighbors posts, as well as us, for this upcoming week, and we will, you can find us on Instagram.
Right, and um in addition to writing emails to our politicians and things like that, we also hold Zoom meetings where we spread education. We post about that on our page, so follow us for updates on that as well and tune in. We would appreciate that, because when you are mobilizing, you have to be aware of what you're fighting for. So, um, yeah, just thank you for having us. We're really appreciative of getting the chance to speak and list our demands. Um, and we hope that you guys take this to heart and kind of do more research. Don't just take our words for it. Learn about these things yourself and get mad about them yourself as well.
Uh, yeah, thank you, thank you for all of that, and thank you for joining and taking the time to even come on, onto this platform. Um, I do agree that you should have this conversation with other electeds. Um, I hope you can get them. Um, uh, it's, it's, it's a little, it takes a, takes a strong backbone to want to listen to what your residents are wanting and, you know, taking, take that beating. Um, so if you, that'd be great, if you're bringing the conversation to them, I'm all for it, please do. Um, it takes more than just one individual. Um, I'm, you know, can't just be one on their fighting. Um, but yeah, please do, and then if you're out there, ask him, you know, what he thinks about Black Lives Matter and, you know, his comment on uh, I think it was the last council meeting when he mentioned that, uh, all lives matter too. Uh, it was, it was kind of unique hearing that. Um, it's, 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 the focus is on this right here. It's, it's Black Lives Matter. It's all about that, and so bring that, ask them, um, and, but please, have this discussion. And you guys are doing a phenomenal job. More residents here are praising you guys for you guys coming out. You're, you're kind of showing up the older age group of, you know, what they kind of used to do back when they were younger. Um, and you're actually getting them out to uh, out in the protesting world too. I remember, I think on Monday, so, an individual on a motorcycle joined the uh march. And he mentioned that with the first fifty-five, he hasn't seen this in fifty-five years, and that's, that's a strong statement. Um, so you guys are really making a change. Uh, I'm proud of the push you guys are doing, and I'm glad you're taking it in a way where it's not combative. It's not, you're not coming in, you know, headstrong and wanting to, you know, break things and dismantle. No, you just want to have an open, clean conversation and try and find solutions. Um, that, that's amazing. Um, so again, by all means, anytime you guys want to have another discussion, I'm here, I'm open. Um, I've made myself easily accessible, so by all means, go ahead. Um, and yeah, uh, but thank you, thank you guys for, again, for uh joining. Um, everyone who's watching, check out their page. Um, if you want to donate, by all means. Um, and now I'll shift to uh city questions, um, now for the rest of the, I think, half hour.
Thank you.
Real quick, thank you for allowing us to speak to you publicly. Uh, I mean, we have lots to say, lots to discuss, so again, it won't be the last one. But uh, like you said, we're getting praise from the older generation. Praise is cute, it's cute, but we need action too. Alright, step up, just like we are. Step up. Cool. And also, we plan on, we really, we demand, we're not asking, we demand a meeting with all the council members. Michael Ishi, you too, I want you there, baby. Cool, thank you, everybody.
Thank you guys for joining me. Have a nice one, you guys. Um, for everyone else that's still on, uh, we're gonna be, uh, I'm gonna be asking, answering some other questions regarding the fireworks issue. And um, let's see here, and the Hawthorne reopening, and other questions that we see here on Facebook Live and things of that nature. Let me see here. Uh, when was the waiver lifted? This is from uh Lisa. When was a waiver lifted on issuing tickets for street sweeping? You know, it's been a very good question of getting a lot of emails regarding street sweeping citations. Um, residents weren't given a full enough warning ahead of time. Um, they, they were sending out warnings, I believe, maybe a week or two prior to June first. Um, but if you can, please send me an email regarding your citation. Uh, let me take a look into it and see if I can extend some kind of waiver or see if I can address, um, you know, extending it to the point where a lot of these tickets to residents are forgiven. So please, by all means, whoever's out there watching, uh, listening and watching, um, send me an email, call, text, um, with a picture of your citation with the date, and um, that way I can kind of help address that. Um, where are the three school districts? This is from Angela. Uh, where are the three, three school districts that incorporate the city of Hawthorne? Uh, the three are Hawthorne School District, Sentinel Valley School District, which includes the three high schools, uh, Longdo High, Hawthorne High, and Losinger High. And then the other one is Wiseburn School District, um, which has Da Vinci and the high school there as well. Uh, so those are the three uh separate school districts. Oh, and Hawthorne Math and Science Academy um is part of the Hawthorne School District, so people don't kind of get uh confused on that. Uh, let's see. The next question we have here is from Hector Lean. Can we send mental health counselors to nonviolent calls as was voted by the city council in LA? Um, as we talked and mentioned before, yes, that is a very good idea. Um, it does help address future problems. Uh, so that is something that we are working with. We're also working with a uh nonprofit organization called New Star Family Justice Center. Um, I'm working with them to create a program where they can work in tandem with our police officers, where they're sending units from their organization to help uh, you know, domestic violence issues, mental health related issues, when it comes to that side. We want to look into expanding it a lot more. Uh, but yes, that is a wonderful idea. It's going to help um create more community involvement. Uh, so yes, uh, that, that will be something we'll be looking into implementing very quickly. Uh, from Muhammad Usain, uh, street parking spots marking, when will that start? Um, when, if you're talking about uh the T parking, uh, with the T parking um paints on the street, um, uh, you can actually get that now. You can go to City Hall and ask for that to be painted on, in front of your resident, a residency. Uh, so just go to City Hall or even email. Um, City Hall will reopen publicly for individuals to walk in. Check this now. City Hall will be opened. City Hall will be opened July sixth, so again, that's July sixth, City Hall will be open for residents to walk inside and partake in city business. City council meetings will still be held virtually, because there is a set limit of individuals who can have one room. By September, we should have it open again completely normal. That's, you know, of course, there's no second wave and everything moves smoothly. But email, text, I mean, email or call the city department now. Building and safety in regards to having the T parking spots painted in front of your residency. If you want, you can wait until July, I think it's July sixth, the Monday after fourth of July to go in there physically and, you know, talk about the program, get more information about it. Let's see, oh, thank you Elaine for, I should have seen that comment sooner. The website for the salaries, as I mentioned before, which you can also find mine and everyone else's, is called Transparent California. So go to transparentcalifornia.com, and that's where you can actually look up every city worker, every committee worker, every elected, anyone working in public office, that their information is supposed to be public, you can find their salaries there for years. And their packages as well. So again, that's Transparent California, thank you Elaine, it was on the tip of my tongue, but thank you for giving me that information. Let's see. We have another one coming in from Jordan Sanchez wants me to touch on the topic of job opportunities with benefits, how can I get my employer to cover my health and retirement? You know, this is gonna be a very good question to bring up and discuss at the next town hall with the state treasurer. That is something that they're looking into, getting more funding for, to help these employers to address these concerns when it comes to healthcare and retirement for their employees. With job opportunities, as we begin to reopen the city, you will see more jobs open, because of the businesses opening up. To get them to cover it. You know, it's, it's one of those things where you would have to mobilize, and it's hard, sorry to say that, but to get a lot of the employees based behind you in order to have your, your top executives listen to cover your health and retirement. Unfortunately, right now with all the businesses shutting down and COVID, you know, that is hurting their bottom line. They are using that to cut into the health and retirement benefits of a lot of their employees, which is, which is very difficult and very hard to see. But if you can bring to their attention, there are small business loans, medium business loans, the state treasury department. And that's why I bring her next, next town hall meeting. They're also giving out loans to address this problem, they're, they're giving out interest-free loans, there are interest-free loans for employee payroll to put them on and give them a health and retirement fund. So please go to my website, under the COVID nineteen section, you will find links to those websites. You know, bring that to their attention, a lot of businesses don't know about these. And then if you, if you can, also tell them about the next town hall on July ninth, where the state treasurer is going to be on our call to address these and even explain where all these loans are, where all these, all the free money is to help not only residents, nonprofits and businesses. So yes, please join that if you're concerned about eating the, what's it called? Health, retirement benefits and your unemployment checks and stimulus checks, so please join that call with the state treasurer on July ninth. It is going to be a big one, she's bringing in four speakers from her office as well. I'm excited that she was able to agree to come on, but yes, please come on there and ask any and all questions regarding that. Oh, and as an update for, from the last town hall regarding Senator Steve Bradford and his bill regarding the ten-year payback for the eviction moratorium, it has a bill number now, I have sent my letter of support. He has given me a draft of what that looks like, I'll be posting that and sending it as an email blast for everyone to read. It's almost done, and it's almost, you know, through its final approving process. I, I know it's difficult to keep on waiting, but if you wait, there's a couple more weeks, it'll be in effect. And those that can partake in it and take advantage of it, by all means, jump on the opportunity. And contact Steve, Senator Steve Bradford, he's working on the bill with Senator Pro temp Tony Atkins. It's a wonderful bill, it's quite large, but it's gonna help a lot of individuals, renters, commercial sites and landlords themselves. It's addressing them as well, we're not leaving you out, trust me, we know you need to pay your mortgage and everything, so it is going to help you as well. Hector Lean, the contact information, I will have that posted on the website and email that to you as well, so if you can, you know, shoot me an email. That way I can kind of give you access to their Instagram, their, their Facebook, all their content information for the two groups that we're just on. Jennifer. Received at sixteen, you know, this is a big key on May first, I have sent a letter to property management company here in Hawthorne to fight since there an eviction moratorium in place, what can I do since I have received any response from them, can the city help me? Jennifer, that's a, has a huge concern, if it was on May first, the eviction moratorium was pushed into effect till the end of June, we're looking to push it even further, but the fact is that the state's eviction moratorium lasted until May thirty first, which was the one that the governor enacted, so by all means, please call me or shoot me an email. It has been a crazy past couple of days, but I'm clearly open now and free, so now I can address all the calls I have missed, we're addressing everything now and all the emails. So yes, please shoot me an email or give me a call, and I can look into helping you with that, that is a big concern, we don't want you to be wrongfully evicted from your house. So by all means, please, as soon as you can, contact myself. We have another question from a an awesome attendee, I live in, in a city-owned building, rent is still being required, that no regular maintenance is being done, is that due to rent is still being required, but no regularness? You know, that is a cause of concern, if it's a city-owned facility, there should be regular maintenance being done, even though our city hall doors were closed to the public, the city hall itself was still working. It was only closed to ensure that, you know, that we weren't spreading any of the, you know, the virus to the employee base and things of that nature. So by all means, please give me a call or text me, that is a concern, there should be some maintenance work done. Give me a call so I can know more, I know you want to be anonymous here, but please call me and I can take care of that for you. On the Facebook side, let me see, questions here. From Alexander, I'm interested to see if there are ways to implement nonviolent police social work units within, yes, within the police department. As, if you're on here before, as I mentioned, that is something we're looking into, it would, it helps alleviate the stress on the department as well as to the community of having these kind of programs set, having these nonviolent police social work units, address these calls. That way they can use the time to address different calls and really just engage with the public in a, in a more calm and casual way. I'll take in a few more questions before we wrap things up. Hater, this is from Ally. Hater, is there a city of Hawthorne community that focuses in creating educational cultural programs with emphasis, with emphasis in children and youth? There is a youth community set up, I, I'm sorry to say that I, they haven't been active in quite some time. I've taken the liberty on myself to create a lot of programs to my own office. We, I've been working with the New Stars Family Justice Center to create programs. You can find out on my website, I've worked with Michael's Learning Place to also work on programs, especially for our youth with mental disabilities. Educational, you know, there could be a lot more done, honestly, there can be. And if you have any ideas, by all means, please call me and I can implement those a lot faster on my end. There's less red tape from me, especially when I'm pushing them forward, so by all means, I would love to have more of those programs implemented. There is room in our budget for that, so please contact my office, office, contact me, and let's start getting these programs into our community. I'll take a few more questions before we wrap up, let's see. Again, if you're on Facebook, you do not have to be on Zoom to ask questions. I'm monitoring the Facebook Live questions as well, so there's no need to be fearful on that. Brian, to answer your question about the police budget, it is very common for a city that has their own police department. You'll see a lot, which is why there's so much attention to it, to try and find a restructure. A lot of cities with their own police department have, it is close to fifty, fifty-five percent of a city's budget to maintain its own police department. When you don't have that, then you're given sheriffs, and the hard thing about being with a sheriff department is they're stretched out even thinner. So if you do call in, you won't get a response for, you know, X amount of time. So having a police department does cost a little bit more money, but you have a faster response time, you're able to engage with them a lot better. But there, we have to find ways to kind of work with that and find a way to make it work better for the community. But I, I tell you, it's a lot better than having the sheriffs, trust me. You call, you'd be lucky if they answer within an hour to any kind of call you're calling. So yeah, that's the difference between having sheriffs in your own Hawthorne Police, your own police department, it costs more, but you get faster response time, you're able to engage with them, you know where they are, sheriffs, they're almost like they're almost invisible, it's kind of hard to, and you've heard about this in other cities as well. Let's see. City Hall is gonna be reopening July sixth, that's the Monday after fourth of July. Let's see. I, I do agree, Ally, that funds should be looked into for the Hawthorne community. The funds should be allocated to a Hawthorne committee that will oversee what programs is being on. Yes, there should be a good committee set up that way, that is what the council is there for. But having a separate committee with residents is a better idea as well, because it brings in the community closer to their local municipality. And they'll have ideas and see things that we can't necessarily see all the time, so that's a very good idea that I would like to move forward on, and call me so we can actually push it forward. Sugar Luna, I'm sorry to hear that it does take a month for your daughter to see a council, that is extremely long. And it's sad to see that, you know, with the amount of budgets they have, that you're taking that much time just to get the resources and necessary attention for your own daughter and your family, that is a cause of concern, thank you for bringing that up to me, especially from the other groups over here. I want to address that with the school district to see how we can accomplish that, what is the reason behind it? And they'll be on the last virtual town hall in July, right after the state treasurer. Hello, from Juan, when do unlawful detainees process, where do unlawful detainees process? When can evictions proceed, what if those evictions are not COVID nineteen related? So if it's not COVID nineteen related, it's the normal process when it comes to evictions. Those can start, you know, normally, when it comes to COVID nineteen-related issues. There is a moratorium, there is a payback program in place. I have that ordinance placed on my website, so please visit hater, hater Hawthorne, haterhawthorne.com to view that. And for the processing of unlawful, that's gonna be our building and safety, actually it'll be our city attorney's office, so if you do have something like that, questions, please contact our city attorney, I'll place his content information on my website as well. So you can have easier access to have all those kind of questions answered. I'll take two more questions, everyone else, rest assured, I will be answering everything that's left unanswered through email or through a call. Veronica, I do agree, having funds for parent workshops and showing parents what resources are available is a great way to help kids with emotional problems, and again, that helps decrease any future problems that we might see as they grow up. So no, that is something I'm working on already with two groups, I'll have their information online. And if there's any other nonprofits that you know that do this kind of work, by all means, send them my way, I will create a program with them, I will use my own funds and to get them moving, for a lot of these programs, I've used funds out of my own pocket, not the city, and not even from my office. I want to help the city create programs without having to spend extra of your tax, tax dollars. Lisa, thank you so much for thanking me. Christina, we have one, we have a question from Christina, what is being done about homelessness? As I'm stepping out of my house, I'm seeing more and more homeless encampment, for instance, on my way to get tested, I saw one of them at Memorial Park in full underwear. I felt so bad about that one, there were also a few more, also by nine cent store, all of a sudden there are small camps there. So will homeless issues that are rising in Hawthorne be addressed? Yes, I have received a lot of emails regarding this issue, it is a, now it's becoming next to COVID nineteen, this is my next important initiative. You, there has been increased tick when it comes to homelessness, you're seeing that a lot more in the city now. We are creating programs to address that, we are looking into it now, the encampments you're seeing, they have ran rapid. Sadly, having myself work only with our potent force of police department is not enough. So please also contact other council members, let them hear your concerns, the more we can get them engaged and to actually listen and help, it makes it a lot easier and faster than just having, you know, my office push. But we are looking into programs to help rehabilitate them, help them move. Their, their city hall has a bunch of programs already now, working with PATH, and we're getting them off the streets by getting them housing and jobs too. So we're working more on that, we have to do a more increased approach to it, and as the city hall opens and all of our employees come back to work on full staff, we're going to be addressing that even harder and faster, but in a, in a good way. David Trump has the Hawthorne COVID testing location closed, nope, it has not closed, they do walk-ins right now. And I'm happy to say that I have locked them in for the entire month of July as well. I'm also excited to say that now the Hawthorne Testing Center is the showcase center. So apparently, they're taking all their RNs and EOCs and department heads and all these, you know, pharmaceutical companies are actually coming to the test center I opened up, the one I'm working with now, they're using that as the model for everywhere else. We, we've had no cases of our staff being infected, we're, we're getting people out, in and out extremely quickly, registering without any headache. So be happy that the one here in Hawthorne is the prime example of what a testing center is. So by all means, please go get there, go there, get tested, it's free, if you have our time, please call me, I can register you in there. And plus, you can also go and do walk-ins as well. Yes, I do agree with you, David, it was, it was kind of odd not seeing it on there, it could be because they've been maxed out when it comes to how many open spots they have for that particular day. But you can do walk-ins, so by all means, just go at any time that you are able to go, and they can register you there. I did bring that up to them this morning, as I didn't see it on the site as well, so they're going to fix that, but by all means, just go there. You can do a walk-in, they can check you in there. And if you do fall into that, use my name, if I'm not there, if I'm there, give me a call or text and I'll walk you in. We'll do one more question, I'm sorry, we are gonna get it over. Appreciate that comment, Veronica. I'm trying to answer everything, all the questions out here, I'm trying to address everything. I appreciate you bringing that, that I won't have all the answers, I'm not trying to pretend I do. But at least having that open conversation and, you know, working with the community, admitting where my strengths and weaknesses are, like, it's the best way to, you know, as any leader to move forward and fix issues. If you pretend you know everything, that's the wrong thing to say, and the rule is, if you're the smartest person in the room, then you're in the wrong room. The last question I will hit. Oh, Veronica, I'm sorry, if it's taken you a week to get your results, that shouldn't be the case, please contact me and I'll see why that is. It max takes only three days. But they have had some technical issues, but if you still have an issue like that, please let me know. And again, keep getting tested, it's free, so if you want to keep going in every week, by all means, go after it. The last one I'll take is what's being done about fireworks? So with fireworks, the big issue, big item. So I sent a survey. I'm going to be sending out a petition as well. I've received, wow, almost close to 600 responses. That's amazing. I'm going to send it out again. Please fill it. Those responses will help gauge better of which tactic I can take, because I want to hear from you and what way to address it. I will also be sending out a petition for residents to sign, looking to banning fireworks. It's already banned only for the 4th of July from 10 to 12 midnight. There's already a thousand dollar fine, which is like the max we can do as a city, unfortunately. We are looking to see if we can increase it. But we're, we're trying to see if that has to take a citywide vote. There are limitations when it comes to, from the state on what we can do, because we're not a charter city. So I am working on that. We're working on increased patrolling. I'm creating a citizen task force that I will also be on, be working with and implementing to find ways of addressing it even faster. And almost making them be like a neighborhood watch for these fireworks issues, which will go along with an online platform where residents can anonymously send in pictures, tag locations and videos of where they're happening. This way we can address it faster and sooner. It's almost done. We're making this from scratch, the online reporting system. It should be up live by Monday, but give me a, give me a few days after that. But I'm hoping to get up and running by before 4th of July and getting that running. And so we can start trying it. The whole thing is we know that 4th of July is not going to be the last time you're going to hear fireworks. That tends to happen quite a lot throughout the year. So the citizen task committee, if you want to join it, please send me an email or call. The online platforming, banning them. You know, banning the safe and same is also going to help limit the amount of illegals you do here. I know it's a touchy subject for the nonprofits. I'm working with them to, especially with the veteran groups. The funds that they would lose out from these sales, I am working on to try and find them a different source of revenue for them to touch into. So they don't feel as if they're losing anything and it'll be a win-win. We'll start like maybe having a fireworks show where they can raise the funds for and have the vet groups get funding from that. And we'll have our own city fireworks show done at one time. So it's not, you know, bombarding the residents every day. So that's what we're doing now. And that's what I'm doing about fireworks. So again, watch your emails for the survey, the petition. I'm sorry, I'd love to keep going. I think we're almost running for two hours. But for all the other questions I haven't touched, I will be emailing you my response or texting even replying by text now. Again, thank you all for joining me today. It's been a wonderful town hall. Again, this is not the only times you can contact me. I do have office hours, the second and third Thursday. The first and fourth Thursday are when I have these town halls, bring in guests. And plus any other time you want, you can call, email. I can set up separate Zoom meetings. This is just a way for me to engage everyone at one shot. But again, by all means, thank you all. I, here's my information on the screen. And email me. But again, thank you all for attending. Visit my website for more information. Sign up on our website for weekly, weekly email blasts, other information that we send out. Again, thank you all and I'll see you next time. Have a nice one, everyone.